I'd like to call the November 15th Common Council Meeting to Order. It's November 15th at 6:02 PM. Councilman West, Councilwoman West.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Clerk Treasurer, Parthenon.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Galloway. Absent. Councilwoman Cutler.
Present.
Councilwoman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Vincent.
Here.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Approval of minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion passes six zero. Petitions and comments of the citizens, both in person and on social media. We do have one card, if you would come to the microphone, state your name and address. Brian Cager. And just as a reminder, before you go, Brian, this is not an interactive discussion. Three minute maximum. We don't make personal personnel comments, negativity. And state your item of topic, and if the council has questions, they will address.
Sure. Brian Cager, 406 Easton Street. Whenever, not whenever, but I've been up here and when I always suggest that we do our due diligence on how we spend money and so forth, this is just an example because it really has nothing to do with the city of LaPorte. But Johnson Road was done less than two years ago. You can probably see 12% of the center line. Driving home tonight at 5:15. So that's why I talk about how we consider and how we spend our money. Because literally, we talk about safety and public this and public that. And honest to goodness, you can probably see 12% of that center line down Johnson Road. So that's why I ask you guys to make sure we do our due diligence when we're spending money within the city of LaPorte. Because there's, I understand, as an example, again, the EPA regulations and all this other stuff affects black top and paints and stuff now that we can use on our roads. But honest to goodness, you can't see that center line at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we do not have any other public comment cards, anybody's social media?
Nothing.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak that hasn't filled out a card? Ms. Gale, did you have a card? No? Oh, alright. Nobody on social media?
Linda Bolus did comment, agreed with Mr. Cager about the lines.
Great. So, we will move on to presentation by LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership, their annual kind of review of what's been happening. And the timing couldn't have been better. Councilwoman West was in attendance of the Indiana Small Business Development Center's annual E-Day meeting, where, again, LaPorte was recognized, specific to Bert Cook, and I probably gave too much credit individually to Mr. Cook versus the team. But, you know, we always talk about competing with the best and expecting to win. We did bring hardware home, so the timing of this couldn't have been better. Before we talk about the annual report from the advancement group, I thought it would be neat that everybody, and I think Councilwoman West agreed, to kind of share with what happened this past week at the E-Day event. Bailey McGrath, formerly of LaPorte County Economic Development, and currently now with...
One Region.
One Region, had nominated Bert Cook as the small business advocate that he won. So we thought we would just make the presentation for all of you here. So Bailey, come forward, share your speech that you gave for the award winner here.
Yeah, so this is word for word what we read at E-Day, and then I believe Bert's going to show you all the lovely video that the SBDC prepared. So, as Mayor Tom had said, my name is Bailey McGrath. I am the Marketing and Program Coordinator for One Region. Bert Cook and his team at LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership, or as we all know them, LEAP, do an incredible job in actively helping Northwest Indiana, specifically the greater LaPorte area. When I first met Bert a few years ago, he was speaking at an economic development bootcamp, and he covered business retention and expansion, and I had absolutely no idea what that was. His message, though, was thoughtful, inclusive, and surprising. You see, economic development is not just focusing on attracting companies with 200 jobs. While they are great, and we love those, Bert reminded us that day in bootcamp that a broader, more inclusive perspective is important as well. Our local small businesses matter, and Bert honed in on that fact that we shouldn't lose sight of it. A small business that grows to eventually hire a couple additional people mattered just as much as the big ones we see in the newspaper all the time. This was evident in everyday Bert's work, but his passion for entrepreneurs was emphasized over the last year. During the pandemic, Bert and his team devoted time and energy to help all area businesses, not just chamber members. These efforts resulted in minimal closures and even producing some small business expansions. Bert is a role model to young professionals like myself in economic development, and truly advocates for our communities and small businesses, which is why I was so honored to have nominated him for the Gary Bradley Small Business Advocate Award. I had to trim that down because she said I only got a minute and a half. It was much longer. Bert, as you know, is incredible, so thank you.
Thank you.
And so, before Bert accepted his award, the video was played, and... Councilman Frankie, you'll be queuing it up here.
My name is Bert Cook. I'm the Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership, or LEAP for short. I've been the Executive Director of LEAP for about the last 10 years, but I've been with the organization for almost 15. We are a partnership between an economic development organization and a Chamber of Commerce here in LaPorte. Pulling the two organizations together, we found that there is a tremendous amount of value to our members and to the community as a whole by bringing all of those services that businesses might look for here in LaPorte together under one roof. One of the most important things as an organization that we do is create value for our members. We spend a lot of time determining what is best and work with our businesses to determine what we can do to bring that value to our companies. We believe we've done a really good job of that over the last year as we've increased our membership by 20%. Furthermore, if you're not keeping your current members, growing membership really doesn't matter. So we've been able to retain 95% of our members, which is great for an organization like this. I'm truly blessed to be able to work with such a great staff, and having people that have the expertise that each do allows us to serve our members who range in size from the small mom and pops to the large manufacturers. Sometimes it's as simple as making connections, other times it's as complex as incentive negotiations or infrastructure planning. Six, seven years ago, we had almost 70% vacancy in our downtown. Through our work in the downtown, we've been able to reduce that to less than 15%, and we continue to push that down year after year. Additionally, the organization has been responsible for over $600 million of capital investments that have occurred in the city of LaPorte, and we're proud of the work that we do to help encourage companies and individuals to invest in the city of LaPorte.
So no further ado. Councilwoman West, I don't know if you wanted to add anything, you were there, and the large crowd.
No, I think we can all say right here that it's an award that was well deserved, and I was very honored to be there and be a part of that. So thank you, Bert, and congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate you attending as well. Good evening to the council. Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. I appreciate, as the mayor mentioned, I appreciate taking a few minutes and Bailey being here and reading her kind words and showing the video. It really is a team effort, what we do is because of the tremendous people that we have that work at the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. So I'll start there by introducing my team, if that's okay tonight. So we have Mike Riley, who's our President of Existing Business Services. Lindsay Johnkind.
Could you stand, please, when you're...
Stand up.
Thank you.
Lindsay Johnkind, who's our Director of Marketing and Communications. And Eric Nelson, who is our newest member, who is our Workforce Development Coordinator.
Mr. Cook, as Ms. Attorney Aldous just mentioned, they're all from LaPorte.
Correct, that is absolutely correct. Additionally, I also have a number of board members who are in attendance tonight. I appreciate them taking their time to spend it with us. So Laura Franciscone is here, who is one of our Board Chairs. Jim Clarida, Kathy Henrich, John Carr, I saw Mike Schultz, and Ryan Seberg as well. So appreciate them taking their time with us tonight.
And Jay Seberg, let's not forget about Jay.
Absolutely. And so, I'm going to spend a few minutes with you. I always enjoy the opportunity to talk a little bit about our successes over the last year, but also maybe touch on some of the things that we do for the city of LaPorte that are maybe not as well-known as maybe they could be. And so we'll go through that. Please stop me if you have questions, I'm happy to try and answer those as we go along. So we, the city of LaPorte has contracted directly with LEAP or the Greater LaPorte Economic Development Corporation since 2001. Originally, our contract was an annual amount of $220,000 a year, but as the organization has grown and we have developed additional sources of income, we've been able to reduce that contract amount to $145,000, which is where it stands today. The services that we offer really fall into three distinct categories. The first is economic development. Again, you see on the screen, that's typically new business attraction, that's project management, the incentive negotiation becomes a piece of that as well. The second pillar is business retention and expansion. That's our relationship development or maintenance tool, specifically with existing businesses that are operating in our area. We also use this as a way to monitor kind of what's going on within our local economy and look at some trending there as well. And finally, the third pillar, workforce development, which is kind of our newest offering. We form or strengthen the connection between our school corporations and our local businesses. We find and administer training opportunities, and we develop skills, most notably within our seniors or our graduating seniors within our school corporations. The point, I guess I'll leave you on this slide with, is we provide one single location where businesses can come to find any of the tools, information, or services that they need to be successful. So we'll talk a little bit about business attraction, and Bailey mentioned it, and I'll agree with her that, you know, it's oftentimes, we spend so much time talking about large-scale projects, and we like seeing those in the newspaper, and of course, we like those projects, but it goes well beyond that. So if you look at the left side of the screen, and I apologize, it's very small, but since 2016, we have landed 28 new projects in the city of LaPorte. Those are projects, large and small, as you can see by the list, if you can read that. Those projects have resulted in $301,972,000 of capital investments in the city of LaPorte in that time period. Additionally, 923 new jobs have been created within those projects as well. Now, in order to land those projects, we've conducted 338 site selections during that same time period. So if you do the math on that, that's about an 8% success rate in terms of projects landed versus opportunities that we've seen. In any economic development organization, we would tell you that 5% is a metric that we shoot for, that's a really good year. So we're very proud of the fact that, of that 8% number. Now, just in the last couple of years, I just, we've done, as I mentioned, a lot of different site selections, but I wanted to mention a few as I think they were, they're at least interesting to me, and they maybe give you some perspective on how far that reach goes. Over the last two years, we've had a Fortune 50 company spend about six months with us looking at a site here. We've had companies from South Korea, Germany, Japanese company in town. We've processed numerous Indiana Economic Development Corporation projects or leads that they've brought to us, and we've dealt with many different parties interested in locating in our downtown area. So if you look at the numbers a little bit more, you'll notice that for every dollar of public funds that have been invested with our organization, we've turned that into $347 of private investment. So Councilman Frankie, if I could ask you, in your business, in your personal life, with your investments, what sort of return are you shooting for on your dollars that you invest?
Well, I like to aim high, 30% would be fantastic.
So I think you'd agree, 347% is obviously a very high mark in that regard.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Appreciate that. So that, the, my next slide here discusses our focus on the existing businesses. And although we talk about new business attraction, often, we're just as committed to supporting our existing businesses. So since 2016, we've done 365 visits with local companies. Again, those are companies, both large and small. We do this, we operate this through what we call our Retention and Expansion Program. It results in annual visits that develop and maintain relationships with our local companies. Mike Riley and Scott Hamilton of New York Blower lead our Retention and Expansion Committee, which is made up of 12 community members who dedicate their time to supporting our local companies. The LEAP staff, both myself and Mike, have trained most of our counterparts in the seven county area in implementing, developing and implementing a robust retention and expansion program like we're discussing today. I mentioned workforce development earlier as another pillar. Again, this is one of our newest service offerings. We competed for and were awarded grants in the amount of $205,000 from the Howmet Aerospace Foundation to support our workforce development efforts, which are led by Eric Nelson and Mary Wellnitz, and our Workforce Task Force. The Workforce Task Force includes members from companies like Northwest Health, American Rentalit, NRP Jones, American Licorice, O-Tech, EPAC Machinery, and New York Blower. So workforce development is an expansive term, but our efforts are concentrated in four very distinct areas. The first is connecting local high school graduates to our local job opportunities. And it seems like that's a simple enough strategy, but it's far more complex than you think. We lose a lot of our graduating seniors to other communities, so capturing and bringing those people into our workforce is one of our main focuses. We also have a program that works on soft skills training within our high schools across LaPorte County. We've got a childcare voucher program, which assists those that are interested in re-entering the workforce but have found childcare to be the barrier from being able to do so. And we also are working directly with Ivy Tech on an industrial technology certificate that would provide the training and expertise needed to directly enter some of the more prevalent jobs in the LaPorte community. So none of the work that I've discussed would be possible without the leadership of our Board of Directors. Our Board is made up of 20 executive-level leaders from throughout the LaPorte community. We've got manufacturing, healthcare, finance, and the trades, just to name a few of the sectors that are represented on our Board of Directors. Again, you can see the full list here in front of me on the screen, but I'd like to give special acknowledgement to Laura Franciscone and Steve Krang, who serve as our co-chairs for this year. So finally, I was going to just ask if you have any questions, but I always like to do this, so I don't put anyone on the spot. I've written a couple of questions down that I think we get asked most often, and I thought I would just touch on some of those as maybe a way to share that information. But if you have other questions, stop me, I'd be happy to try and answer those as well. So I'll go through these answers kind of quickly. What are the benefits of a non-governmental or separate economic development organization? So the question comes from, in some communities, you will see an actual department of the city or of the county that is focused on economic development. I think the more common way to structure it in Indiana are these separate ED groups. It allows for a variety of benefits, most notably, the cost, the overall cost is reduced because you're working on a contract. We're able to bring private dollars to the table to support our efforts, so we bring in, about 50% of our overall funding comes from private sources, which I think is a huge advantage to the city, it's a huge advantage to our organization. And we're also able to protect confidentiality. Again, I've worked with you all for years, I preach how important confidentiality is in any project, and I won't go too far into that, but I know you all know that we lose, you know, communities lose deals every day over not being able to protect confidentiality. So the second question I have is, why do cities have to utilize incentives at all? Why is, like, wouldn't it be better if we just got rid of those tools? And I'd be the first person to agree, it would be better. It's not the ideal situation. In a perfect world, you know, you wouldn't need incentives, communities would compete based on the characteristics of their particular community. But that's not the world we live in. Incentives are offered in every single community, it's an extremely competitive process, and if you don't participate in that way, then you lose out projects to those other communities that do. What benefits are there, as LEAP is a multifaceted organization, so we bring both economic development and chamber services together. So in the 80s, what you saw was economic development groups were spun out of chambers of commerce because there needed to be an additional focus or more focus on economic development. We think we're on the forefront of a trend that is pulling those organizations back together. If you look across the nation, you'll see some really good examples of other-like organizations that have brought everything under one roof. It's been very beneficial for their communities, you've seen greater growth in those communities, and the resources that they bring to the table, I think, are appreciated. So we see a variety of advantages to bringing both economic development and chamber services under one roof. And finally, the, probably the most popular question we get asked is, why don't we bring, name your favorite restaurant, or why do we have so many of the restaurants that you don't particularly like in the community in LaPorte? And so, you know, we'll stress the fact that when companies are interested in locating here, they're looking at a wide variety of factors. Demographics, market saturation, competition, available locations, interested franchisees, like franchises in other communities are just a few of the things that are looked at when a corporation is interested in locating here. And so, at times, we don't possess the, let's say, demographics that we might need for one particular restaurant right now, but that doesn't mean you can't grow into that opportunity. And so a lot of what we do is to work to strengthen the areas that are already strengths, but also make improvement in some of our areas of weakness in order to provide for opportunities that may not exist today. So that, those are my, the questions that we see most often. If you have other questions, I would be happy to try and answer those, and I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit with you today.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the council. And I would like to say, you've got a great team, and you do a great job, but if it wasn't for a pro-business city council, I know you've recognized it, but the incentives that they've approved and passed and supported on, and again, every day, someone's calling saying, well, in Newport Landing, if you didn't use incentives to clean up with, I think, over 81,000 tons of contamination, you left it in the ground, you could use that money for the, just do roads in the city of LaPorte. And unfortunately, due to lack of education, they don't understand that you just can't do that.
That's not how it works, right? And, you know, the other part, Mayor, you make a great point, you know, oftentimes, we think of incentives, we talk about only the financial benefit of those, and I think there obviously is an important factor, but it also speaks to partnership. You know, when your companies are interested in investing tens of millions of dollars in your community, I think they want to know that when things are bad and it's a struggle that they have, you know, signed on with a good partner who's going to be there to help and to assist along the way in order to make sure that they're sustainable and successful along the future. So I think when you, you know, when you go through this process, you also make statements in that regard about your partnership, about what you expect, you know, moving forward. And the council has done a tremendous job of, you know, when we bring companies in, I'm always impressed at, you know, the way that they're treated and the manner in which you all conduct your business as well.
I have a question. How's the move to the new location, and what benefits do you see going forward at your new location?
So, moving is never fun, I'll start with that. You know, we're almost there, and so we are in our new location, which is 605 Michigan Avenue. We've always wanted to be a little more connected to the downtown, and this gives us that opportunity. We got some great neighbors in the area, so we're very excited, though. We'll officially release a lot of that in the coming weeks as we kind of get fully set up in the new space, but so far, so good, and I appreciate the question.
Also, and again, the council's been aware, but the incentive that we're focusing on, or the goals that we're focusing on, are those companies that are coming into the city of LaPorte that aren't paying $10 to $12 an hour, but are paying $20 an hour plus benefits minimum. And I think you've seen some data, and I didn't see it up here, but could you share just how that's beginning to mold and with the jobs that are at $75,000 or more?
Right, so, great question, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, the quality of the job is the focus, and we're focused on spending our time on projects that help us meet that goal. So for 2020, the jobs that were created, the average wage plus benefits, $23.56 an hour, so we're very, very pleased about that. And we had a goal of creating 10 new high-quality executive-level jobs, meaning $75,000 or more, and we've created at this point nine for the year. So we're close to the goal, and we'll continue to push that envelope and make sure that we're focused on attracting the type of companies that you all want to see and that will help move our community forward.
Further questions? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And just a reminder, we have our Department Head Annual Goal Planning tomorrow, so enjoy the award today, and that only counts till about midnight, then tomorrow, we start to press for 2022, beginning tomorrow. Standing committee reports, Councilman Frankie.
The Police Commission met on Tuesday of last week, and Price Atley, a deputy prosecutor, had sent an email to Chief Ratten recognizing the work of Officer Cody Benson, and his great work stopping a vehicle at Tyler and First Street, and a dog hit on it, and it resulted in a Level 2 felony possession with intent to deliver 26 grams of cocaine, and his work there was done textbook and very well, so he was recommended there. Other than that, the Redevelopment Commission... Other than that, the Redevelopment Commission meeting has been moved up to Tuesday instead of Wednesday next week because of Thanksgiving, they'll meet at 5:15 here at City Hall, and the Diversity and Inclusion Committee will meet this Thursday because of Thanksgiving, and that'll be at 5:00 PM here at City Hall. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Ficus.
The only thing that I have to report is that Park Board will be meeting this Wednesday, November 17th, 4:00 PM at the Park Office.
Councilwoman Vincent.
Nothing to add this evening.
Councilwoman Cutler.
On the Business Improvement District Board meeting this month, the city planner reported that he had plotted all the paved repairs that had been reported over the last few months to the bid and would be sending the list out to Paul's Construction for repair. A damage planner at the corner of Lincoln Way and Madison was reported, and the board requested that the city planner follow up on an insurance claim for the damage. All the flower planters have been cleaned and topped off with soil, and the water department has turned off the irrigation system. The upcoming installation of the holiday banners and decorative lighting was also discussed, and it was reported that the Parks Department has begun the installation of wreaths and still has to do the decorative bows. And a desire for "Live in the Lake Life" banners were discussed for the summer season, as well as the need for a banner schedule for 2022 because of the many requests. The UEA, the Urban Enterprise Association Board held their annual planning meeting this month and discussed the 2022 budget and possible changes and additions to their planned programs for the upcoming year. The Director of the Civic, Brett Benversi, presented a plan for the Civic Auditorium Events Management to oversee the management of the farmer's market as well as Listich events in downtown, and the board approved the idea and the funding. That's it.
Councilwoman West.
Just would like to report that the Fire Merit Commission will meet on December 1st at 6:30.
Councilwoman Kineszny.
The Historic Preservation Commission will meet tomorrow, Tuesday, November 16th, at 5:30 in Council Chambers. The Tree Commission will meet this Thursday, November 18th, at 5:00 PM in Council Chambers, and then the Airport Authority will meet next on Wednesday, December 8th, at 5:15 at the airport.
And if I may add, HPC, Councilwoman Kineszny, that team has done more in the last six months than we know the struggles and frustrations with historic preservation over the past 10 years, and I heard there might even be a social event to support historic opportunity in LaPorte.
So, by next meeting, I should have a few very exciting announcements, both through a grant that's been awarded and the gala that you referenced, so it's still kind of under wraps. Confidentiality, right, Bert? Okay, next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and by the way, anybody from LEAP that was here for Mr. Cook's presentation, don't, we don't, we're not offended if you wander off into your evening and enjoy dinner, so don't feel that you have to stay, but we'd love to have you stay here. Students, you have to stay for the whole meeting. Councilwoman Ficus, second and final reading.
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
Additional appropriation for Park and Recreation Fund, 216.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Schreiber, would you come forward and speak to this, if you'd like, please, briefly?
Yeah, and I believe that Clerk Treasurer Parthoon addressed this at the last meeting. This was simply to provide funding that was necessary to completely fund a labor position that was left out of the budget for the 2021 budget, so we want to make sure everybody gets paid.
Questions? Further discussion? I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Councilman Frankie, introduction of a resolution.
I move to introduce a resolution, red in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Frankie.
Resolution to proceed with real estate exchange with the LaPorte Community School Corporation and granting authority to sign, whereas the city of LaPorte has entered into a real estate exchange agreement with the LaPorte Community School Corporation to exchange certain tracts of real property, and whereas the parties are prepared to close the exchange of the properties on November 18th, 2021. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the city of LaPorte Common Council that the parties proceed with the closing, the exchange of the properties, and that Thomas Germany, Mayor of the city of LaPorte, is hereby authorized to execute any and all reasonably necessary documents required to complete the exchange of the properties and to close the aforementioned transaction. End of resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Attorney Otis, if you could just give a brief review of this.
Title company, meridian title, looking at Laura there, requested that we have the, have a resolution specifically identifying the mayor as being able to execute the closing documents.
Discussion?
I'll just note, going forward, Courtney and I will make sure that this is included in any ordinance where we need to act on having signatures for a closing.
And we appreciate the partnership we've had with the school system, with the land swap, and I think it's been beneficial to both parties, so we're excited about that. Further discussion?
I am curious if this is why Mike Riley borrowed former slicer basketball coach, also Nick Otis's father's, came to attire in support.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Councilman Vincent.
Honorable Mayor, I'd like to make a motion rescinding an ordinance and amending Section 94-237.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Vincent.
An ordinance rescinding ordinance number 13-2020 and ordinance amending Section 94-237 loading zones of the municipal code of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, whereas the Traffic Commission, after due consideration, has recommended to the Common Council that ordinance number 13-2020 be rescinded. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that Section 1, that Section 94-237 loading zones of the municipal code of the city of LaPorte is hereby amended to delete the following, Neeson Street in front of Sacred Heart Catholic Church on the north side of the church, the distance between two walkways. Section 2, any ordinance in conflict shall be repealed. And Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage approval by the mayor and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Discussion? Councilwoman Ficus.
This is actually pretty simple. It came before Traffic Commission, the church requested the loading and loading zone to help people coming in and out, and by the time we got all the supplies, it passed council last November, and we were getting ready to actually put up the signs and paint, the church decided that they didn't want it, so we just need to get it rescinded, it's as simple as that.
I would recommend that you could suspend the rules tonight and pass this in one meeting.
I would agree with that, so I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
So, I do have a motion and a second to...
Suspend the rules.
Suspend those rules. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Do I have a motion now?
Need a second motion to read it by title only.
To read by title only.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to read by title only. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Vincent.
An ordinance rescinding ordinance number 13-2020 and ordinance amending Section 94-237 loading zones of the municipal code of the city of LaPorte, Indiana.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Councilwoman Cutler, introduction of a resolution.
I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Cutler.
Resolution to transfer funds within the 2021 budget, whereas there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2021 budget in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year 2021. General, court enforcement, 101-318-XX, from 365 leased rental payment to 315 professional services, $3,238.36. Communications, 101-311-XX, from 331 printing advertising to 315 professional services, $275.08. Police, 101-370-XX, from 361 repairs maintenance to 351 utilities, $4,100. From 361 repairs maintenance to 221 operating supplies, $4,000. From 321 communication transportation to 221 operating supplies, $10,000. Parks and Recreation, Civic Auditorium, 216-801-XX, from 351 utilities to 211 office supplies, $300. From 351 utilities to 331 printing and advertising, $400. From 315 professional services to 231 repairs maintenance, $500. From 361 repairs maintenance to 321 operating supplies, $1,650. Civic non-reverting, 272-803-XX, from 391 non-reverting other to 111 non-reverting salaries, $2,500. End of resolution.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Clerk Treasurer Parthoon.
Just end of year, more end of year transfers, you'll continue to see these.
I was just going to say.
Cleaning things up.
'Tis the season.
Yep.
Further discussion? I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Councilwoman Kineszny.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce a purchase agreement read by title only for its first time.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Kineszny.
Real property purchase agreement. This real property purchase agreement is made and entered as of the effective date by in between the city of LaPorte and an Indiana municipal corporation, the seller, and Diani Realty LLC and Indiana Limited Liability Company, the buyer. So, basically, the purchase agreement that sits before us is for a tenth of an acre on Pine Lake Avenue. It's a non-buildable lot assessed at $3,500 for said consideration.
So, discussion, if you don't mind, I'll have Mr. Cook from Economic, from LEAP, come forward, discuss the agreement.
You guys can't get away from me tonight, so, so, yeah, the agreement is, purchase agreement for the tenth of an acre, this went in front of the Park Board last week, we appreciate their support, they unanimously voted in favor of supporting this transaction. We're solving a couple different issues. So, you have the developer that is building a 12-unit strip center along Pine Lake Avenue. This is the project that was announced about a year ago. Doc's Smokehouse is one end cap tenant for them. They also have an additional, can't use any names, confidentiality, but it is a franchise restaurant. It's probably the name that we get suggested to attract most often, so they've been able to sign a letter of intent. It's a fast casual restaurant for the other end cap on the building, but as, as they have two kind of volume traffic drivers, they need additional parking, so they'd like to acquire this tenth of an acre to help offset some of those needs. At the same time, our park department has a small amount of space, 15 feet by 125 feet behind their building, they've kind of encroached on the developer's property, and so, in order to be able to continue to use their parking lot and their dumpsters back there, we've carved out an easement that will allow our park department to continue to use that as such, and made that part of this transaction as well. So, the purchase price is $10,500 on the property. Happy to answer other questions you might have. I think we're excited to see the project move forward and seek... What did you say that restaurant was again?
I'm going to say it's a, I'm going to say it's a national fast casual, you know, people said, "We don't want drive-throughs, we don't want drive-throughs," and this is a name everybody's going to recognize, so...
And I don't want to, I don't want to overstep either. You know, Doc's Smokehouse is a terrific land for them as well, the largest selection of bourbons within a restaurant in the United States headquartered out of Milwaukee. I know they've built new locations in McKenna, Illinois, and Sherville, I believe, so we're very excited to have them as well. I think it's going to be a terrific development for us.
Questions for Mr. Cook? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any last discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other business? I do have a couple items. Mr. Schreiber, would you like to come forward? You've got two big things that have happened really since our last meeting with the basketball tournament and some focus on what we're going to be doing downtown. You've got a couple sponsors here in the crowd that you may want to acknowledge.
Well, I'll let you acknowledge the sponsors, because you've been working really hard at that, but as everybody knows, we're thrilled to be bringing in the NIBC Invitational, the LaPorte Invitational, part of a nationwide series that's been put together by Paragon Marketing. This is really just a huge game changer for the Civic in terms of bringing on notoriety for the facility, but also for our community as well, so we really want to pack the house. We've put together ticket packages that are really reasonable, $20 for a day's session, but we also have VIP opportunities, sponsor opportunities out there, so we encourage all local businesses that want to be a part of what is really going to be the biggest event of the winter to get ahold of us. We'd love to have you on board, I think we're going to get a lot of bang for your buck with what we are offering, but the basketball's going to be phenomenal, I mean, 22 of the top 100 seniors in the country from a prospect perspective, you're not going to be able to get to see all those type of players in one place very often, so to be able to do it right here in LaPorte with LaLamere in our own backyard as one of those top teams in the nation, we're more than excited to be having this happen here.
On ESPN.
And on ESPN, yes, and the exciting part is, those first three games on Thursday are all going to be broadcast on ESPNU, which is on many basic cables, many basic streaming, so households and, as I've often said, B-Dubs across the country, LaPorte is going to be on there, and every time, as we all know in basketball, that ball crosses that midline, that midcourt line, how many times a game, we'll have LaPorte, Indiana right there, and so many mentions and so many visuals, so from a perspective of getting seen as a community, you know, you just can't get that type of exposure easily, but to be able to do it and also be able to spotlight the Civic Auditorium is just a win-win for us.
We're also getting an update to the lights as well at the Civic.
Right, so as part of the ARP money that was appropriated, we, we're going to see that light work actually take place this month, at the end of the month, it'll all be done, so we'll have a bright new floor, everything's going to look great, and then, of course, we'll be moving forward on the roof and everything as well, so between the improvements we're making at the Civic and the new events, you know, basketball's just one of them, the concerts that we're having, the other things we're attracting, we have promoters now interested in our building, the offerings that we're going to have at the Civic, all of these things are meant to make that building viable for the next 40, 50, 60 years or more, and by making the improvements, by utilizing the building more often, getting that revenue stream going, you know, sky's the limit for the facility, and it's exciting to be able to breathe that new life into a 90-year-old facility that was given to us by the Fox family many years ago and has really served the community tremendously. And of course, I think the mayor would like me to discuss the downtown. And, you know, as soon as Lake Fest wrapped up, the mayor kind of pulled me and said, you know what, we're going to work on next is, we need an ice rink for downtown LaPorte, and I said, boy, we're going to build an ice rink. Well, we may build an ice rink eventually, but we are going to bring in a temporary rink, and we'll be seeking, we're going to do that as a park program, so we'll be having that discussion with the Park Board on Wednesday night, but we are soliciting sponsors to help us bring it in. It's very exciting, we're going to do it downtown, just off of Monroe Street, and we're going to have a lot of great skating opportunities. This is a refrigerated rink, it is going to be a lot of fun, 300 skate rental, I mean, 300 skates to rent will come with this package, so it's going to be from January 21st to February 21st. We kind of looked at it from a different perspective, you know, everybody has that holiday rink, we just said, well... We just said, well, there's nothing really to do after Christmas. So now we're going to have over a month of skating opportunity for all of our community and we're going to make sure it's available to all, all people. We're going to reach out to elementary schools and other factions and, and have some skating nights. It's, it's going to be a really, really fun, fun thing for us to do.
And Councilwoman Cutler will be teaching skating?
Yes, figure eights and figure fours or whatever else they will want to do out there. But yeah, so it's going to be exciting. We really want to utilize it. It's going to be there for a month, which is pretty exciting. And the, the location where this rink is before is actually in Sommersville, South Carolina, which if you can believe it, they actually can keep it refrigerated down in South Carolina. But they have tremendous success with it and we expect to have similar success. And we know people have asked for skating for years here and following the mayor's lead, it's just exciting to be able to put this package together and be able to offer this going forward.
And it's a former Olympic, Olympic skater that runs this program.
Yeah, it's Wayne Sebold. He actually was the mayor of Marion for a while. He lives in the Annapolis area, but in 88, he was in the Olympics in pair skating. So he has a passion for ice skating. That's why he got into this, where he provides rinks and works with communities to bring rinks into their communities. So pretty exciting and maybe Councilman, Councilwoman Cutler, maybe he'll pair skate with you. We can get that lined up. But it's going to, it's going to be a lot of fun for all the families, a lot of great weekends, a lot of evening hours. And we're working to get some food trucks down there and some other things to, again, we, we want our downtown to be vibrant year round and I think this is just one more step to doing so.
And I also think it allows us to put our toe in the water as we look at the YMCA and, you know, obviously, we'd certainly love to see a YMCA facility, a new type of facility like that in Newport Landing. We have the land and this will allow to say, hey, should a rink be a part of that larger, newer facility that's available to the public?
Yeah, absolutely. I think then this would be a great test to see how much interest there is in skating. We know how popular it is over at the Valparaiso Rink or the Ribbon Skating Facility over at Howard Park in South Bend. So we know we have a lot of people who are looking for winter opportunities to get out and enjoy it. So it's going to be, it's going to be exciting. We're putting together a fun package. And like I said, we're, we're still looking for some sponsorships. So if people would like to help sponsor that, we'd be more than happy to talk to them.
So we have basketball sponsorships available, ice rink sponsorships available. And I would like to acknowledge, you've got individuals here. When you look at the City of Laporte, we're so fortunate to have people that are always sponsoring Mitch Ficus, Ficus Builders, I don't want to leave you, Dunland Media, always doing different things, whoever else, Ryan Seberg, depending on if it's Cubit Network or whatever, the people that are continually coming back. We've got Jim Clarida, John Carr here from the Laporte Stark Palaski Building Trades, Laura Franciscone, always with Meridian, GIS with Kathy Heinrich, Northwest Health. You know, you see the same names of people that are always being involved to make Laporte a better place. And I want to say thank you for those that, we somewhat feel bad that we're constantly coming back. I remember I said somewhat, but it's also that they're always so willing to help and participate. And can we just give them a round of applause?
Absolutely. It's, it's exciting that they see merit in these projects and all these things that we're doing, whether it was Lake Fest, whether it was the downtown La Stiche events, whether it's the Civic events with the basketball and now the ice rink. We're, we're just thrilled that they see the merit in what we're trying to do and that they've been such great partners for it. So we're excited to make these things happen for the community and, and look forward to a great, great winter here.
And you mentioned La Stiche, Derek Arnett coming through twice.
Absolutely.
With big sponsors there. So we're fortunate to have all these different communities in Laporte.
Mark, Mark, question. Will you, will you still be doing the ice rink in front of the park department or is this going to kind of?
No, we will still do the, the ice rink. Now remember, the ice rink in front of the park department isn't refrigerated, so it's weather dependent. But it does have a, a really passionate fan base.
That's what I wondered.
That likes to use it. So the young hockey kids that love to go out there and play, we will still set that up and hopefully we'll have a, a nice frigid winter for them to be able to enjoy that as well. So absolutely, thank you.
Couple other items. Veterans Day was an amazing event. Our goal was to pack the house at the Civic. Thank you to Mark Franciscone of the school system. Laporte Schools had 600 kids there. You know, we think it's important that kids are a part of the Veterans Day event. We had a luncheon, so our veterans committee did a great job before and after. But next year, we are going to pack the place. When you look at the old pictures of how many people participated in the Veterans Day event, if we can't pack that for an hour to say thank you for our veterans on one day a year, I'm not doing my job. So we are going to pack it even further next year, but we're off to a good start. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with department heads as we set our goal planning for 2022. And again, this is something just not as the status quo, but to really push what we can be and what we think we can be, competing with the best and expecting to win. Like such one of the items is, you know, drug trafficking and addressing, not reducing drug trafficking, but setting a high goal enough to eliminate drug trafficking. And what do we have to do? We got a great leader out there. I know he hasn't heard about this yet, but we've started to set a standard and now we're going to go, what has to happen to eliminate drug trafficking in the City of Laporte? And what do they need successfully to happen? And that's just one example that we're going to be pushing all the department heads to rethink how they do their business, rethink how they do roads, streets, sidewalks, park department. And we'll be having some high-end goal setting tomorrow, which we're excited about. And then lastly, and I think you've heard Sheriff Boyd talk about it, you've heard some of the county talk about it, we almost lost nine officers in the last month to South Bend, police officers. You know, tomorrow, they can go tomorrow and make $20,000 or more per year. And Laporte County gives $28 million to property owners, homeowners, in property tax relief, which are the property tax caps, which I support to this day and are good things. But we lose 25% of our revenue. We've done many things, thanks to the council and Clerk Treasurer Parthoon about cutting back. But if we want public safety and we believe in the future of our community, we don't have the funding for future leaders, future elected officials. And we have to look at some things that I think Governor Daniels put into place back in 2009 when property tax caps happened, finding revenue alternatives. And when you look at 79 counties of the 92 are all doing some type of this work, we're one of the few that do not. I think public safety is an important part and we have to look how we stay competitive to keep our officers, to keep our firefighters, to keep EMS and doing some things there that I think we'll start having open conversation about. So it kind of falls on the county council. We've started to have discussion, but you see those communities that we want to be like have much more revenue coming with higher tax rates, different things that nobody wants to talk about. But just understand, we give $28 million back to taxpayers countywide that are homeowners. They see relief. So I think we're being very efficient as much as possible and we'll look forward to those discussions. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn or is there any other business?
Other business, real quick, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm involved with the Laporte Turkey Tribe. We have 250 people signed up, but I didn't see your name on the list.
I thought it was an automatic. I didn't have to sign up, but I will be there.
Thanksgiving Day, biggest 5K race of the year. Well, Julie, Julie gives us a run for the money with her race, but we usually have over 500 people.